To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will be reports of the borough officers. Do we have anything from our financial advisor?
I shall have a full report on the borough finances in the council meeting.
Okay, great. Police chiefs, report.
I have a report ready for a council meeting, but I would like counsel to consider in reviewing my records, we are due to complete a civil service test to keep our list active in the event that we have a sudden reduction in manpower. So if counsel would consider before the council meeting maybe activating the civil service, I could be the intermediary to speak to Emil to make sure that gets taken care of. And I did send Tom and John an email. Our physical requirements for the position of police officer are a little antiquated and may leave us, may not be the best part of the test, testing process. I reached out to Mopec and got their physical agility for the entry level position in the police academy, which has stood the test of time and the test of the courts. I even have a copy that John and Tom, ours is governed by an ordinance. So if we do change it before another test, it would have to be done by ordinance with something I would hope counsel would consider.
Just by consensus?
Yes, I was going to bring those two things up. The number one, we would make a motion to request the Civil Service Commission to do a test for a patrolman. And number two would be, we have sufficient time to-
Plenty of time.
Well, many ordinance-
Oh, okay.
To change the physical requirements to the national models.
Okay.
We'll do drafted ordinance and circulate it around, but we have time to put it in and get it advertised prior to the council.
All right, so do we authorize in exploring activating that and we'll do the motion at the next meeting or do we do a motion tonight?
No, no motions tonight, but at the regular council meeting, we could just somebody, we just make a motion to request the Civil Service Commission to do a civil service test. And then the ordinance, we would vote on just like any other ordinance.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the chief? All right, fire chiefs, report. Do we have anything from the fire department?
I'll have a full report. He's out. Family matter.
Engineers' report.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a formal report, but I do want to bring something to council's attention. The county is now involved with liquid fuels and county aid. They've always been involved with the county aid. But however, just recently, they held an online session and everybody was invited that has anything to do with county aid and liquid fuels funds. So the county now has put deadlines on our liquid fuels accounts, like road programs that are common and normal. Now, the county wants deadlines for project to be implemented in dock grants by June 30th. They want all projects completed by September 30th, then all final payments made and 999 report submitted by November 28th. This may not mean a lot, but just generally speaking, but it is an absolute, I think it's almost impossible for every municipality to make that happen, especially when we have four or five contractors that bid on every single road program throughout the county. So they're putting some very unusual deadlines on this. The other thing that the county has implemented is we can no longer defer our county liquid fuels funds for one year. And you have to advise the county whether or not you want your liquid fuels, county aid liquid fuels in advance. And then you have to use them that year. Prior, you could defer them to a following year and get two years worth on one project. Now, use it or lose it. So we did, or we did inform the county that the borough will be taking advantage of their county aid liquid fuels funds. So that being said, we're going to have to work pretty rapidly to develop a scope for the road program this year and then get it out to bid and get the work done.
JP, I know we had a conversation. Aren't they just the administrator of the grant? Isn't that direct money that's through the borough director?
That's why I find it, this is extremely unusual and burdensome. I don't know why the county would get involved with Penn dot liquid fuels funds that come directly to each municipality. But what they're trying to do is have projects completed so that on the county liquid fuels portion is cleaned up before the following year so that, so that those funds are dispersed to the municipalities. So they're putting, the county is putting deadlines on projects, which really they don't have a jurisdiction over. They just don't want the liquid, the county aid liquid fuels funds sitting in their account for an extended period of time prior to dispersment.
If a municipality doesn't use it and loses it, does that money go into county's pocket?
It does.
Well, we can, JP and I can assure that that's not going to happen, but we do end up with contractor issues holding money back on a contract. That's where I could see a problem. Where we're not satisfied with the contract and there's a dispute or we're holding 10% of his money, whatever we put in the contract and we, and we're up against the deadline, what do we, you know, we're at the job we're playing about, but that, we're not, you know, that, that, and that happens more, and it's not that this bad contract, we just might, may not like the job we did or you had a bad batch of blacktop or the curve wasn't right and JP doesn't sign off on it, so.
Also, I mean, September 30 deadline is awful early. I mean, you know, if it was mid-November, it'd be different, but this is real arbitrary.
In the past, we've also played the fuel. Sometimes fuel is less expensive in different times of the year. So now you're forced to go out of the market when you know the market's high. JP knows where those numbers are.
Right. So you're absolutely right, Tom. It does become a burden for each municipality to have final payments made by November 28th. When, just last year, for example, the 999 form had to be submitted by the end of the year.
The year.
And once it's done, then it's fine. And then we go through the borough, the municipality goes through the audit and everything's-
Actually, the audit's happening this week, from last year. Okay, just wanted to clear it up.
That's all I have. What's your question?
Any other questions for Mr. Kelly? Next is the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Wanted to just report on, we did, council will recall that, excuse me, about a year ago, there was a hearing before the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the Rose Bar License Renewal. And the borough did participate in that, Mayor Campbell, council members. We don't have the ability to become a part of it, but we did participate. We communicated with the LCB attorneys and, you know, they let them know that they, we were opposed to the license, at least as it was then, without at least some conditions. We just received this past week or so, the conditional licensing agreement between the LCB and the owner of the Rose Bar. In essence, LCB and the Rose Bar negotiated an agreement to allow them to have what's called a conditional license, which is not a full license for the restaurant. It's kind of, I think back to Animal House, you know, now they're on double secret probation. But they're, they're, you know, which means that they'll be watched, but also they have, they imposed a lot of conditions on them that I thought a lot more significant. So there's a lot of training that is required for all employees and managers. They limit their hours of operation. They have to close by 1 o'clock AM. They have to install security and surveillance system consistent of a minimum of 18 security cameras and at least 12 cameras located inside of the premises, providing view. And they, again, they detail more regarding what they're requiring for the security cameras. They'll have to have at least one security person on duty. And again, that security person has to be trained and has to have certain certifications for handling firearms and that, that sort of thing. They have to have a metal detector on the way in. They have to have somebody that would want to read each person's license. Just like when you, you know, if you buy beer or wine at the Acme and the cashier has to, you know, scan your license, they're going to have to do that for every person that comes in. And interestingly, if they note, if the person goes out of the bar, smoke outside and comes back in, they still have to get scanned again. So they, they, they really are putting a lot of requirements on them. They have to maintain a written bar patrons list, which is available for inspection by law enforcement. And any breach of the agreement is caused for non-renewal of the license. So they, they are able to operate with this conditional license during their term of, through December 1st, 2027, which would be their normal time to, that's the next time they would have to renew with all of these conditions. There's a copy of the conditional or counsel or anybody wanted to see some of the other conditions that they applied there, but you kind of get the gist of it. So while still allowing them to operate, you know, they imposed more conditions than I've ever heard of for a bar to operate. So that's a great payoff from the efforts of mayor and the police, you know, in enforcing the laws against them. So that's all I have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. McLean?
Yeah, I do. John, and maybe Rock, you can answer this better. Has that bar calmed down?
Significantly.
Okay, okay. And the other, with their ID, young people have a pretty deep well of access to phony IDs. I know a case that somebody had one out of Texas and my daughter, his mother was, was kind of upset. But, you know, will these scanners that scan these license IDs be able to pick that stuff up?
It should, Councilman. I mean, I'm not an expert in it, but I think the idea with these scanners are, you know, with the codes they're embedded, it's very difficult to fake.
Okay.
I, yes, certainly fake licenses aren't what they were when I was less than 21. But I, I think that these, I mean, never say never, but these are pretty difficult to defeat.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
John, I have one question for you. You said that they need to maintain a patrons list. Does that-
Ban patrons.
Oh, ban patrons. Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Community development and code enforcement.
Thank you, Madam President. About two weeks ago, we hosted a training in this room that was put on by the Pennsylvania State Association of Burrows on building an effective planning commission. And I'd like to thank the planning commission, the members of council, the mayor who attended that training. I thought it was very helpful and hopefully it'll be useful information for us to go forward with. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Gold? Managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. In front of you tonight, we have a resolution authorized in the submission of a Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program Grant Application for the Commonwealth Financing Authority and designated borough officials to take action in support of the application. JP and I are working on this pretty aggressively. I think it's due end of next month, I think it is, or 50. And we're working with our grant to pick up more money for Madison Avenue. It's been on the project horizon for a long time. We're coming to the completion of the design process. The next phase will be to getting some easements from some of the business owners and neighbors. And once that occurs, then we'll be putting it out for bid. So there's, there's money that has come down through the pipeline, through the governor's office for this. And we think we're, we're in good shape lined up potentially because the project's already designed. A lot, a lot of people are out just thinking about this now. So this will be something we can really put to bed and get this finally established. So that's on the agenda. Next would be just some updates. It's been a busy month. We had a meeting with the residents for Diamond Street Park here in the council room, as well as Glenwood Avenue Pickleball and the dog park. Gave really nice, JP did a great job on some of the presentations. We picked and selected some of the equipment that's going to be used there. JP's finalizing some of the elevations. That's pretty much a ready to go project, I would say. Pretty much do a little of that locally, independently, without a lot of high bidding. We can, we probably, with James, my crew, we could probably do a lot of that fencing installation for a local contractor. The grading's already been pretty much completed. Just have some tweaking to do with the pickleball court for my expert, the mayor, who plays pickleball. I learned something today about sunshine, that you have to make sure the courts are north, south, instead of east to west. So we have to make sure the way the sun rises in Clifton could have a big impact on this. So that's really going the other way and we're getting really good positive comments. It's like something that a lot of communities are doing and I think it'll attract some nice, for our middle aged residents. The Seven Oaks Sewer Line today, they've been out there. They've mapped it out. We have a dip in the sewer line that's caused some residents to back up for about, I'd say, 80 feet of line. And there's probably 15, 20 residents that are affected by that. Along that stretch, they've been notified. Next step, the cameras will go to JP. He'll do some elevations of design work and we'll be meeting out there next, next week and see what we can accomplish there. We were twice now met with the field at the school, a reference to the Clifton Field. It's now going to be ownership of the burrows. We've met with our architect engineer, landscape engineer. I guess that's what they call himself, right? Landscape, right?
Yeah.
So he's, has the elevations. JP's now reviewing them. Be another meeting with, we're looking to go with a KPM on that project to bring it in front of John to see if it's eligible. We do know it's eligible under the project. They've done it before. How it mixes in with the current contractor who has to leave, the bid for the school district leaves the field prepared, I guess is the word, and we pick it up from there. And we have irrigation that's going to go in there and turf. So we're looking forward to that final that we can start. We're kind of, we're ahead of the curve on timeline because they're not going to be finished until next summer. So we have some time to work on that. The Springfield Road construction, as you know, we received a $3 million. Starting this week, tomorrow, actually, they're going to be doing some test boards on Springfield Road. There'll be lane closure, one lane. I'll let the chief, he was, him and I were on the phone today. He's going to pick up on it tomorrow and he has some thoughts on it. So he went, talk on that a little bit, chief.
Because of the volume of traffic, they're only going to be working from 9 to 3, I believe. So it sort of gives us a little bit of leeway in the beginning of the morning rush. My concern with the, with Nick, the program up there, was any cars that are going north on Springfield or making a right from Baltimore to Springfield in the early part of the project, there wouldn't be enough area for a queue. And by queue, I mean, if they pull around and stop and wait for the one lane of traffic, it's going to start backing up to the pike, it's going to start backing down the pike, then backing down Springfield Road. And if anybody's done Springfield Road around 8 o'clock in the morning, it's backed up the olden most days anyway. So I did, that was an unforeseen situation, I think, on their part, but we had a great conversation. I'm meeting with them tomorrow to see how we can rectify that. My one position was just shut off northbound traffic on Springfield Road in the short term. If we do see a problem and have the traffic go up the pike, out of Oak, out on Oak, and they can jump back on Springfield Road without any delay. I'm going to meet with them tomorrow and see how the traffic flow goes, see if it's even warranted. I think it probably will be at some point. Until they get further up Springfield Road where we can create a queue where cars can pull in and when they stop and wait for the flagman, they're not backing up through the intersection. That was my big concern, but I'll work with them.
And we also talked, JP, that to keep it as narrow as possible, the 22, 22 foot pipes, so if they're running two at a time, you're 44 feet, they keep it within 75 feet and keep it narrow and tight against the curve. I think the traffic flow could flow a lot better. So we've really emphasized to really keep that construction safe, but tight against that. I think they're two and a half feet, three feet off the curve coming up. Yeah.
So with, you know, any complaints, residential complaints and with the contractor, if, you know, traffic from Springfield Road starts diverting by its own means down any of the residential streets, as long as they're not detoured down a street and somebody just gets impatient or road people get impatient, there's not much we can do other than monitor situation. We considered those streets without any traffic control devices leading on the Baltimore Pike, maybe blocking them off during the high rush times that you can't go down those streets. An example would be Summit Street. If cars became impatient, started cutting down Summit Street, the Baltimore Pike because of the work being done further down the pike, there's no traffic control device at Summit and Baltimore. So that would just back up in about a minute. And anybody who's been on Oak Avenue recently can attest to that. That's the whole problem down there. But there's just some, some ways that you can't get around it. But we're going to work our best, take complaints as they come in. The contractor was very open with us today and accepted all of our, what's they called, recommendations and we'll see how it works out.
And then, once the chief gets back to me tomorrow on what's happening up there, we'll put a letter out to the residents who'll be affected going up the street towards Sycamore, on the affected side, a couple of homes. The next thing is that we're working on, it's going to end up going to council to the, John's working on as well as the fire chief. I have to meet with the chief, but we're getting, we had a roll up door installed on a business. There's two problems with that. One is it's a tractive nuisance, as far as I'm concerned, for the neighborhood. Number two, I don't believe it's necessary in this neighborhood, but more importantly, it becomes a fire hazard. There's only one, means of egress and egress. So we want to try to tie the codes together. It's in the fire code, but also try to address it through planning so we can see if we can regulate some type of, front stores have to have so much open, you know, window glass, whatever it is, if possible. Next one will be, tomorrow, we're doing, do a cleanup in coordination with Upper Arby Township with their Parks Crew and R. James and Jimmy. We're going to have from Sycamore Road, from Wind Cliff, all the way to the Upper Arby line down on Palmer's Mill. Coordinated effort. For some reason, it's become a dump up there. We have some washers up there. We got, it's just a mess. You can really see it. So before the foliage gets in there, we want to get up there. Once that's complete, Joe Martin from Upper Arby and John from here, we're going to work with our L and I departments to, it's our Seven Oaks back homes and it's also Whitehall Drive's back homes. If you know where Scully is, it kind of curves around there. JP, I think it's almost impossible for us to figure out where that, the Indians drew the line because it goes up, comes down. So we decided, you know, let's just get in there and work together to get it done. And then we'll issue out notices to keep an eye on their backyards, you know, somebody, they're dumping it or somebody's dumping it or yards up there. So that's happening tomorrow. The other one is we have a letter going, finalizing, residents received a letter to have handicap spots back in December. Be able to submit them by January 15th, I believe it was. Part of that is they need the motor vehicle, Penn Dot's Motor Vehicle Handicap Approved Form, which means it comes from your doctor. Some of the people submitted it empty. Some of the people didn't submit it at all. So what's going to happen is we're going to send a secondary letter out for the residents that did not fully comply, applied but didn't fully comply with it, give them the June 1st. The people that did not, that are on our handicap list, that are not responding at all, will be putting covers over top of those signs and seeing, you know, someone could be deceased. We didn't get any letters back. So if someone could deceased, didn't care to reply or just whatever the reason is, we're going to try to clean that up. There's only, the reason this becomes a problem because there's only two spots permitted under our ordinances per street for a handicap. So when somebody comes in that really needs one for a temporary or a permanent, and there's one on the street that's not being used, but it's being utilized by someone with a hang tag and we don't know about it, then it's just not fair to residents as a whole. So we're just trying to tighten that up a little bit. Anyone that would have an issue, obviously, can come in and we'll work with them to try to get it complete. The last thing we have is we're monitoring the closure situation with EMS and the LS services and work with other smaller and larger communities to see what the impact that would have if something would occur. So we're standing by and that's all I have.
Any questions?
I have one. On the handicap parking. I don't know, chief knows. Is that for just that person or someone else on the street?
No.
So it's for anybody that has handicap could park in that spot?
So if you, if you applied for a handicap spot on your block, let's just say you got the luck of a drone that was in front of your house. Your neighbor down the street parks there with a handicap tag, that's totally legal.
Okay.
One other question, the ambulance situation. We had decided a while back to give the fire company $50,000 a year. Is that enough these days for the wear and tear of those ambulances? Are they going to be needing more money?
They're fine right now if it stayed existing the way it is. We did a very good analysis on that. We're fine. Where we run into the risk, reason we're monitoring it is the people in the vans, in the ambulances are from closure. Our fire company does not have the wherewithal to be able to man those if something happens. So as far as the payer mix and the money they're getting, everything, whenever I speak to them and Cindy talks to them about money going in, that $50,000 is operating, but at the end of the year, they put it in a special fund for the purchase of ambulances. I think, talking to Nick, I think down the road on the next ambulance purchase, I think we have to look at it a little bit. Ambulances are like everything else in the world. That was based on their last, the purchase at the time of last year. I think the next purchase is three years out, so we'd have to probably look at it. So far financially, they're doing okay.
And their revenue's up because they're running 24/7.
Right. I imagine your expenses are up because of running out of green more, length and all as opposed to-
More gas, yeah. Same personnel expense.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? I have a quick question. Could you or JP, I had some question, I'd been getting some questions about the dirt piles.
He's prepared. JP, the dirt-
Dirt piles at the field, especially the ones right behind the houses on Wind Cliff.
Yeah, they are in compliance with their approved plan. They are stockpiles of fill, which is going to be reused. And more importantly, stockpiles of topsoil, which, which has to be reused. Very expensive. They wouldn't haul that in. So in accordance with their MPDES plan and Conservation District Plan, they're where they're supposed to be. Now, I'll have my inspectors, that were out there on a routine basis, closer look to see if they're stabilized. They should have, see, they do have grass growing on them. But occasionally, especially when we had several weeks with no rain, I'm sure there's some bare spots and dust can dust up or slough off or something like that. But I can, we can pay closer attention to the, the status of them currently.
So the pile for topsoil, that's going to be there for a while because obviously it's not going to be utilized until they start doing the fields. But the backfill, is that something that might disappear sooner?
Sooner than later, sooner than the topsoil. But around the school itself, we'll have topsoil also. So we think that's going to grace.
Okay.
Even the small portions around the school itself will, topsoil will be used for that also.
Okay.
So if it's a dust issue, the, the, the stockpiles need to be stabilized with judate, they call that mulch, and seed. We'll make sure that that's in good working order.
And about the areas that, from the stockpile to the houses, that's, we are on them about the water trucks continuing to go.
Yes, yes.
And then you said the, the conservation people are very-
They're on it.
They're on it.
They come out on a regular basis, the Conservation District.
We could copies the reports. There hasn't been any deficiencies noted in those reports?
Okay, all right, perfect. Okay, all right, perfect.
And a little bit of an issue during the rain where it blew out one of the sides built with mud on the street where they're cleaning it up now, but nothing to the magnitude that caused, caused DEP or anybody come out.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions regarding manager's report?
On the sewer issue, on Seven Oaks. Is that the back driveway?
Yes.
Is that where it is? Back driveway. Residents were notified today, they were there, they ran out of there probably in two hours, three hours. Yeah, that's good, good readings. So residents will continue to be informed when we do it. Suzanne, back to you. Probably JP and I, maybe it's, what, April, maybe middle of May, we'll grab those residents together, get Nick in here from the project, explain next phase. Maybe it's time to bring them an update. Now, winter's over, that's, you know, bringing, because there is going to be some construction activities where their trailers currently are, now gets moved down to, they're going to be putting some surfacing down at the parking lot areas at Oak and Springfield. All those trailers are moving there, and then that area gets brought back down four feet. So there is going to be some, back to the digging areas around resident homes also. We'll get Revere and back Windcliff, as well as the Windcliff and Sycamore in for a meeting. So let's plan on maybe middle of May, I'll put a letter out.
Anything, any other questions? All right. We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Swan?
I don't have anything at this moment.
Mr. Resnick?
Nothing.
Mr. Fajoy.
Yes, that's something. In the last meeting, we had some residents from Lansdowne, I mean, Lansdowne.
Back to your post office, Dave.
Yeah, yeah. From Walnut Street and concerned about the parking on that street and the parking lot. At that meeting, we addressed the people to, that we would sit, make a committee, and we'll meet with them. They never called, they never set up a meeting. So tonight, John and I asked to meet with the mayor, president of council, chief, police, and with Tom to discuss this problem over there. We went through the list to find out how many people had driveways and didn't have the driveways. John, do you want to highlight one, a little bit of that?
Yeah, and I want to say first, thanks to you, Bruce, because you took an extensive amount of time to really look into how we can best serve the interest of the residents as well as the future people who will have to use that, that parking lot. There are thirty-one homes on Walnut Street, of which eighteen have a driveway and thirteen do not have a driveway. So the people with driveways, we've asked them, of course, to utilize their driveways. However, because people have more than one car a day, they've been allowed to make application for a parking permit for one car at this time in the parking lot. We've issued, we've twelve?
Twelve spaces.
Twelve permits. And again, the residents that came were very concerned, and after talking about it, we decided that, okay, we're going to try to accommodate some more people. So we're going to issue twelve additional permits. Those permits will be issued to first people who have not already asked and been issued a permit. There are fees associated every six months, fifty dollars.
That's, that's, that's the people that don't have a driveway.
Yes, yes.
That's what it's going to.
That's, so if you, so the people that don't have a driveway and have gotten a permit. Next is, for these twelve spots, it will be open to people who have not applied for a permit and do not have a driveway. They will be issued those twelve spots if they apply for twelve spots. If not, any spots that are left, that are left open, people that have a driveway and a permit may apply for a second permit. No one on the street will get more than two permits. We think that this accommodates people as well as we can, and we still have enough parking for businesses. The people with permits have to understand, though, that if they pull up and there's somebody paying the park, they don't have this privilege of saying, get your car out of there, or that's my spot. It's a first-come, first-served basis during the working hours. The permits are for twenty-four hours a day, so there's, there's accommodation as much as we could for everyone. I think I covered it all. I may not have.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying the best we can to help these residents up in here and talk to our council people to hopefully that just works out for them and to, for the president, and hope that it works out, everybody that way. That's the best we would try to do right now, and we'll try and see what happens. But they never showed up and never asked for a meeting, so we wanted to try to resolve this and get this over with.
Just one more thing I left out. These permits are issued for a specific time period, whether it be six months or a year. If you do not apply, after that permit expires, you lose that spot. So, you know, it's not, well, I already had one, so I get it forever. We've also considered, for anyone who's a renter, that the landlords will know that this is not a transferable parking permit. If your renter should move out and, you know, somebody's coming in, he can't use that as a, like I say, a selling feature for his rental property.
Going down to South Street.
I did, I did notice too that there is more parking now on Harrison. They are using Harrison Avenue more and parking there and moving down, so it does help out on that area.
Okay, so we're going to start out allowing for people with no driveways who have not applied for a permit, and then after no one has, once that period of time has ended, then they open up a second time to allow households to apply for a second permit, and the maximum number of permits per house is two. Isn't that correct?
Yeah. Means I have to put the letter out, so I'm going to make sure that we're clear here, right? I have currently, there's twelve permits out, okay? We're going to issue out a letter in a fifteen-day grace period, opening up twelve more spots. Those twelve spots will be offered to anyone who does not have a driveway and has not had one issued as of that date. If they have one, they can apply for one. After that round's over, we'll open up for another fifteen days. That will allow anyone without, this is what I understood originally, will allow anyone without a driveway to apply for a second one. Or are we opening up, because you said we were opening up for anybody with a driveway, which is?
You're right.
I know, I, I know what I wrote, and that's why I wrote it down, okay? So I want to make sure we're clear. So we're opening up the second round for anyone that does not have a driveway. After that's done, we'll open it up for anyone who has a driveway, if there's any available. Is that what I understood?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, yes.
But you don't seem sure.
No, I, I want, the driveway ones are?
Last.
Last, very last, yes.
If there's any open, right?
Yeah.
And nobody can get more than two.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right. So just so, your numbers were, there's forty-one parking spots there at the parking lot, there's three for a handicap, I'm sorry, there's three for the American Legion for the veterans, there's two that we're giving out for handicap, which gives you a total of thirty-six spaces. So right now, we're going to be giving out twenty-four parking spaces of the thirty-six, right? All right? Okay. We'll get that letter out.
What about the South Springfield Road? Are they more than all the street? Can you get that question?
Or not, right? All right, the question is, the, is Springfield Road included in on this?
Well, and now, there's only one resident that, for Springfield Road, that I know of, that has applied and been given a parking permit, and that's because we consider that he had a permit in the past, and so we grandfathered that individual in.
He also has a driveway, correct? Okay, so this is only going for the people that don't have a driveway, so he wouldn't get the left. It's the people that don't have a driveway.
There was another person in the office who does not have a permit, that's on there, that's in that one area.
Who wasn't aware of that?
It's the last one, you'll get it.
There's a twin, that's it. It's a twin, there's two houses without a driveway there.
I want to thank everybody for, for that, John.
Anyone have questions? Mr. Spirelli, or I'm sorry, Mr. Cannon, it's your turn.
No, I think we covered everything pretty well.
All right, Mr. Spirelli?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody, Sunday, April thirteenth, at one, is the egg hunt, and it's going to be at three hundred North Glenwood Avenue, which is a change from previous years because of the work that's going to be taking place at Diamond Street Park. So look out, there, some postcards went out, so.
I got mine already.
So, Sunday, April thirteenth, at one, three hundred North Glenwood Avenue. I also wanted to thank Dennis from Code Enforcement. I had a resident who had some cable wires go down, and he was able to come out, establish who it belonged to, so we could notify the correct company, and he did come out and address it, so thank you for his efforts on helping resolve that. And then the last thing would be, if there's an issue that needs borough attention or borough response, make sure you contact the borough offices or a council person. We don't monitor Facebook personally, and with the algorithms, I would hate for someone to put something up that needs attention and it's missed for one reason or another. So in addition to, you know, sharing with the community, things that you really need to share with the community, make sure you contact us as well, so we can make sure we respond to any issues or concerns that you have. I know that the, the borough offices have been working hard to try and communicate as much as possible on our website and so forth, but we want to make sure that anyone has issues, that they get addressed. So, and that's all I have. Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing really to report for this caucus meeting. Just want to add a couple things to our Easter egg hunt. So we're, you know, we're, as the mayor, I'm inviting everyone from council, obviously, if you guys can make it, that would be great. I think it's an important event for, for the borough. It starts at one o'clock, it's probably done by one-thirty. We get a lot of residents that show up with a lot of the kids. I think we got like a hundred and fifty kids last year, Suzanne, at least?
I'm not sure exactly how many, but.
It was a lot. It was a lot.
There was definitely a nice little.
But, yeah, it doesn't last long, so if, if you guys are available to show up, that would be great. That's all I have, thank you.
I put one thing, too. Sacred Heart Church is having, selling pierogies. If anybody's, there's nine dollars a dozen square, two weeks, this week and next week. They're really good.
All right, we do not have anything else. We will adjourn.